Sorry, Counselor. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. And of course, we'd like to welcome everybody here in chambers, those who might be participating via Zoom or watching on our YouTube channel. We'll turn some time over to our City Clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens is excused this evening. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmembers Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would like to invite those who would like to participate with our invocation to stand, and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be given by Pastor Addison Bet of Hope City Church.
Good evening, Council. It is an incredible honor to be here with you all this evening. Let's all bow our heads and let's pray. Gracious Father, we just thank you for this incredible day that you've blessed us with. Father, I pray just for this meeting. Lord, I pray for all the members. Lord, I pray that we would be blessed with your presence tonight. Lord, as we have conversation, I pray that you would be in the midst of that. Lord, I pray just a blessing over our time together. And Lord, just let your presence be in this room and evident. Lord, we praise you and we honor you and give you all the glory. It's your heavenly name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah! Hoorah!
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, awards recognition. And these are, we have a couple of proclamations and also want to recognize our youth council. I did want to start before this. I did present a proclamation this morning at the hospital to, today, starting today is National Nurses Week, and this whole month of May is National Nurses Month. And just want to remember and our, all the service and kindness and love that our nurses show to all of us. And so I just wanted to share that with you, that I did that this morning. One A, Proclamation Municipal Clerks Week. And I have a nice proclamation I'd like to read. And of course, we are thankful for our clerks that are here, both Annie and our Deputy City Clerk Tanya. Fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our City Clerk Annie Meredith and Deputy City Clerk Tanya Ferguson, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And of course, I have signed it, and Annie, our clerk, has witnessed it. So, good stuff. We'd like to present this to our clerks and council. If we could all come up and get a picture?
Hey!
That is going to be interesting, because normally Annie is taking some of the pictures. But see, you're going to get in here.
I'm going to. You can stand right there.
No, you can stand right here.
There. I'm going to pop right here next to you.
Yep. Does that sound good?
We're good. Awesome.
Thanks, Mayor. Congratulations. Appreciate you.
This is the best part of this job. You know that, right? Okay, item one B, Kingman Youth Advisory Council 2024-25 Group Recognition. We'll turn some time over to our City Manager.
Thank you.
Oh, Carl, I should read this first, Carl, right? Better. At their July 2nd, 2024 meeting, City Council approved moving forward with the Kingman Youth Advisory Council Kayak. As the school year comes to an end, council and staff would like to recognize all of the kayak members and present the graduating seniors with a token of appreciation for their leadership. We'll turn some time over to Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an outstanding group of youth that we have involved in this kayak team. They all volunteered to be on this committee. And they, it's neat watching. Many times, you'll see many of them in the newspaper, just, not just for what they do with kayak, but all of the activities and scholastic activities that they do. It's an outstanding group of kids. And just really impressed with what they've been able to do this year. They really hit the ground running and started off this year, you know, this committee setting the bar high. They've done a bit, say this three times fast, bed building project with Sleep in Heavenly Peace. They ran a jacket and bedding drive. They've done numerous park cleanups. They're meeting monthly among all their other things that they have going. And I know I'm missing a few, so please, Councilwoman Staley's been very active. I know, Mayor, you've been very active as well. And our clerk has been and really taken lead for me on this committee. But they've done an outstanding job. If I may, I'd like to invite them up, and we can recognize them, get a picture. What I'll do is I'll just go through the list that we have. And then we have a special gift for our graduating seniors, just to thank them for their leadership roles and examples that they set for the rest. And Annie was sure to have me say that we are recruiting for next year. So anybody in high school, we'd love to have them come out. So with that, I'll bring up, first, our officers.
Counsel, let's go ahead and go.
Our chairperson was Sophia Meredith. Co-chairperson, we've got Clementine Wilcox. Jacob Batty as Treasurer. Andy Perkins as Secretary. Elise Hauser as Publicity Chair. And then as councilmembers, we have Braden Bischoff. Roland De La Peña. Jane Esplin. Raymond Lewis. June Staley. Samantha Warner. And Elias Wilcox. And then Annie will help me with handing out the medallions for the, what do we call them, Manny? The recognition awards. There it is. Thank you. So our seniors, we have Sophia Meredith, Jacob Batty, Roland De La Peña, and Raymond Lewis. All right, we'll get a picture and then continue.
So if I could get the youth down here, and then the council on the sides here. Do I stand there?
Sure.
And I'm going to squeeze.
Do you want me to come down and stand me?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
Danny here's kind of a problem. So can you come up? I'm actually getting Elias's piece up. Andy? I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Here's your chair. He's going to be right. Yeah. And then she'll. This would be perfect time. Can you get a girl up? Can I have just the fried wheaties? For a couple. Maybe I'll put the fried. So, oh, you're right there.
Roland, pick up.
Sorry for the. Roland De La Peña.
Hey, one more. One more. Actually, if just Sophie could stay up here.
Yeah.
And then Annie next to her, come over here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Annie, you want to ask her to stand over there. She wants to get a picture with council. The council.
Oh, the council. Yeah.
With your graduating seniors. We're taking somebody's head very long here. Thank you. Good luck. We are. We have one more proclamation. Item one C, Proclamation of Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And as you all know, you know, Route 66 being as popular as it is, it's oftentimes a great place for motorcyclists to ride their bikes and see the country. And so I wanted to share this with you, and this proclamation. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for hundreds of people in Kingman and over 325,000 people across Arizona and millions across our nation. And the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of special skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment, and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And it is especially important for the residents of Kingman to be aware of motorcycles on the streets, highways, and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And all motorcycle riders are encouraged to continue to hone their skills no matter how long they have been riding. And whereas all highway users are being encouraged to be aware of motorcycles and safely share the roadway throughout Kingman. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And in doing so, urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to be alert and to share the road with motorcyclists. Of course, I've signed it, and our clerk Meredith has witnessed it. So, Mr. Denny Lang, if we could come up and get a picture with him. We're presenting this to him and his organization. And council, we could get one more picture?
I'll pop in there. I'm just going to get everybody situated. Do you want to stand if we go, Mayor?
I will. I just have to reach out in there.
You can hold it.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, would you like to help hold the sign?
Yeah.
That'd be great. If you would. And just as a side note, our City Clerk also rides motorcycles.
Yay!
So it is important.
You want to stand next to Mayor?
Absolutely.
You want to work with Abby?
Yeah. I was too, that, I'm the member of a free motorcycle organization. I want a hat. I want to say. Thank you so much. I would like, I would very much like to say, Ken Watkins, Mayor, I can't believe how much he does for this, and also Annie for doing this, because they've been very helpful.
Thank you, Council, for participating in my exercise. So, physical, yeah. Item number two, Call to the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Tonight, we have four citizens that would like to speak with us. And first, Gary Bowles. Mr. Bowles?
Yes, sir.
If you could state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Gary Bowles, and I am a board member of the Mojave County Gem Stoners. We are a local rock hounding club. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about special events. Each year for the past 25 years, we've had an annual Rock and Gem Show here in Kingman. When we put these shows together, advertising is a very important aspect. And that is what I would like to talk to you about tonight. One part of the advertisement is using banners located on various fences on businesses' own property around the town. Now, we all know that special events are a very important and popular form of revenue and entertainment in this town. And one thing is common with all special events, whether it's the fair, the fun run, our show, whether it's a nonprofit, or fraternal organization, or what have you, as they all put it on, they have, the thing in common is they all have a start date and an end date. Okay? So now, we all know what a horrible and unsightly messed-assign situation was getting in town last year. It was really bad, and it made everything look bad. And what I would like to do, is my approach is to propose an easy and smart way to create a good, common sense approach to a permitting process to allow special events the opportunity to use banners to advertise. That's one thing we noticed when we were looking at advertising this year. We use banners that are locally made and very professional. So, one of our approaches is to approach the people that have the property and get their permission, hang the signs on the fence, and go on with our event. So what I would like to propose is, my template for planning is as follows. The applicant files for the permit and indicates the organization's name, location of the event, date of the event, phone number of the person responsible for the signage. Okay? A section showing where each sign is to be located, and a line for the person who gives the permission, such as the property owner, to place to sign so that they can prove, or we can prove, that we got their permission. Okay? And a timeframe. Each sign can be placed two weeks prior to an event and must come down no later than 48 hours after the event. If, this allows for easy enforcement with a quick check. Any signage not properly permitted is immediately removed and confiscated. Okay? We feel that this would allow all of us that have special events, because ours run through like the fun run and various other things, and allows the ability for all of us to advertise in a fair manner. I'm sorry.
You're out of time. Are you almost finished?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that myself and a couple of the club members would be willing to volunteer to be on a city, a committee for the city to help formulate the sign permitting process if it's needed. So I thank you for your time. And is there any questions? I'll, I can answer them.
We can't answer any questions, or we can't ask you any, Gary, but we will, we appreciate your comments, and we will direct our city manager to look into it further.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tracy Bowlin?
Hello. Quite a few of us. Hello, my name is Tracy Bowlin. I am the small stock representative for the Mojave County 4-H. And I brought with me seven youth who would like to discuss tonight a change, a proposed change to a current city ordinance to allow waterfowl within the Kingman city limits. So with me today, I have Cecilia Tyler, Riley Hayes, Madison Hecht, Shay Fulton, Caleb Tyler, Abigail Tyler, and Evan Meek. Sorry. So not everybody's going to speak tonight, because that would take up a lot of time. But the general idea behind what we're asking is for an opportunity for waterfowl to be allowed in city Kingman limits on residential properties. So that's all I'm going to say, and I will let the kids say their two cents on the matter as we move forward.
Okay.
Ready?
Caleb, do you want us, or Abigail, either one?
Okay. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Abigail Tyler, and I stand before you today to speak about the profound personal growth that comes with raising waterfowl and why it's so important for our city to allow it. When you're responsible for the daily care of ducks or geese, you quickly learn the meaning of time management. These animals need consistent feeding, clean water, and a safe environment. There is no hitting the snooze button. This daily routine instills a strong sense of accountability. You learn that other living beings depend on you. That, and that's a powerful message. We also develop problem-solving skills. When an animal gets sick or there's an unexpected challenge, we have to think critically and find solutions. These aren't just animal care skills. They're life skills that translate directly into schools and future jobs and our personal lives. Raising animals shapes responsible citizens, and that's what our community needs. In today's world, young people face many distractions and negative influence. 4-H and projects like Raising Waterfowl offer a positive and meaningful alternative. These projects keep us engaged, focused, and connected to our community. We are not just spending time. We are learning, growing, and contributing. This is a small change in the ordinance. Allowing waterfowl would open up significant opportunities for youth in Kingman to learn the value of hard work, dedication, and responsibility. We are ready to take on the challenge of responsible waterfowl ownership. We believe that it makes us better individuals and contributes to a stronger community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Abigail. Caleb?
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Caleb Tyler, and today I am here to offer a perspective that I believe is crucial to this discussion, the successful experience of other cities that have already addressed the issue of backyard waterfowl. It is easy to get caught up in the what-ifs and potential problems, but the reality is that cities across the country, both big and small, have found ways to allow responsible waterfowl ownership while maintaining community harmony. It is not a radical idea. It's a proven model. These cities have implemented simple, effective rules addressing common concerns. For example, many cities have established clear limits to the number of waterfowl allowed per household, preventing any one property from becoming a large-scale operation. This ensures that keeping waterfowl is a manageable part of the residential setting. Cleanliness requirements are another common successful strategy. These ordinances often include guidelines for regular cleaning of enclosures, proper waste disposal, and measures to control odors and pests. By setting clear expectations, these cities ensure that waterfowl are kept in a way that doesn't negatively affect neighbors or public health. The setback requirements are also frequently used, dictating how far enclosures must be from property lines or neighboring residences. This helps minimize any potential disturbances and ensures that everyone's space is respected. What's truly remarkable is that these cities have demonstrated that when these reasonable guidelines are put in place, communities thrive. Residents enjoy the benefits of responsible animal husbandry, including educational opportunities for youth, and any potential drawbacks are effectively managed. And importantly, youth flourish. Programs like 4-H continue to provide valuable learning experiences while fostering responsibility in connection to agriculture. Kingman has the opportunity to join these successful models. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we can learn from the experiences of others and adapt their best practices to our community's specific needs. By doing so, we can open up opportunities for our youth, promote responsible animal ownership, and enrich our city. Let's not be held back by the fear of the unknown. Let's embrace the evidence that shows responsible waterfowl ownership can be a positive addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Well, Abigail, Caleb, and of course Tracy, we appreciate your comments tonight. And actually, as you, as youth, we're impressed the fact that you have the courage. It's sometimes scary to get up in front of the city council to come here and plead your case. So we do appreciate that. As I stated earlier, we will direct our city manager to take a look at this matter, and so we can examine it later. But once again, thank you. And of course, as a whole side note, I would invite you to think about, some of you or all of you, looking at joining our kayak, our Kingman Youth Advisory Council. Because obviously, you are leaders in what you are doing, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item three, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, if we had a chance to take a look at items A through G. Okay, everybody, we have a motion that approving our consent agenda as it is.
So moved. I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, Action Items 4A, Resolution Number 5556, Approving SB 24-007 Final Platte, Southern Vista 5, Track 6048-H, Improvement Plans and Acceptance of a Property Escrow Trust Agreement. SB 24-0007, A Final Platte for Southern Vista 5, Track 6048, Phase H, to create 40 single-family residential lots on approximately 12.41 acres of land. The property is zoned residential, single-family, 8,000 square foot minimum lot size, R18, and residential, single-family, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, R120. The subject property is located north of Walupai Mountain Road and east of Yabupai Drive, and includes APN, it's? Parcel number, what's that? Arizona parcel number? Okay. Applicant is Mojave Engineering Associates Incorporated for Pioneer Title LLC, trustee under trust, 9320, property owner. Staff recommends approval. Jason, welcome tonight.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Southern Vista Track 6048, final phase is Phase H, and that's before you, the season, the evening, under SB 24-007. As shown on the exhibit on the overhead before you, this particular property is located just to the east of Yabupai Drive as well as to the north of Walupai Mountain Road. The property does have two zoning designations. It has an R-1-8 designation, requiring a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and then a small portion that's R-1-20, requiring a lot area of 20,000 square feet. So a little bit of history on this particular project site, the area was annexed in March of 1982, 89. The Whitehead Track, 1923, originally subdivided the area in general for 40 acres plus some additional parcels. And then in 1996, the property was rezoned from RR to R-16 with a planned development district that actually established for the first subdivision that was coming before the city at that time, which was the Desert Shadows Estates. And then ultimately, that was overturned by referendum by the voters in 1997. In September of 98, ordinances 1186, 87, 88, and 89 were approved, which rezone the site to the R110, R-18, and the R120. In February of 2006, ordinance 1530 rezoned portions of it to R110 and R18 and modified the R120 zoning boundary. In 2006, ordinance 1535 modified the open space and the lot size conditions, which is stated in ordinances 1189 and 1530, which really does bring us back to where in 2016, September of 2016, resolution 5034, with the preliminary plat for Southern Vista 5 was approved by the city council. Preliminary plat has received multiple extensions throughout the years, the last one coming in September of 2024. All phases of this particular preliminary plat have been recorded with the exception of Southern Vista 5, the plat that's before you this evening. This is the plat that is being recorded tonight. This is a final plat. Should be noted that there are two parcels that are designated for retention purposes. Again, this was a plat that was well in process prior to the policy direction that was set by this council and the subsequent ordinance that was brought forward. Does show you the points of ingress and egress from the project site. Overall, the 40, the, the proposal itself is consistent with the city's general plan. It's consistent with the preliminary plat and does provide for housing that promotes and implements the vision goals and policies of the 24 general plan. It has been done in harmony with the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Post-final plat, final drainage plan, as well as the, the improvement plans have been reviewed by the cities, by city staff, by city engineer. Those are all being recommended for adoption this evening along with the final plat. As such, based on the findings contained in your staff report, the conditions and approval of 1-1 through 6, SB 24-007, track 6048-H, is recommended for approval this evening. Available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Jason?
Mayor, I, I will be recusing myself.
Okay, thank you for that. So even with, thank you Vice Mayor for announcing that. Any, if there's no other questions for Jason, then we have a motion approving item 4A, resolution number 5556.
I'll second that.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jason. 4B, ordinance number 1977, proposed amendments to the City of Kingman's street and sidewalk development rules and regulations, half-street improvements. Staff requests the council's approval of proposed updates to the City of Kingman's street and sidewalk development rules and regulations focusing on half-street improvements. These updates are intended to enhance enforcement, improve infrastructure planning, and ensure streets are developed to appropriate standards as the city grows. Since staff recommends approval. Jack, welcome tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I didn't bring any slides. You guys have seen this a number of times. Just a quick note, while we still have some other things to update, we did want to fix the half-street issue that we've been experiencing. And so that's what we brought forward to you this evening. That does correct or take care of the, the discrepancy or the vagueness that was in the existing ordinance as far as what the developers are required to complete, when they complete a half-street and then the remaining half of that street. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. But again, this is language just to address specifically the half-street development.
Okay. Any questions for Jack? Counsel? Okay. Seeing none, can we have a motion then to approve item 4B, ordinance number 1977?
So moved.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 4C, addendum to the concession, oh, this, this item, actually, I forgot to mention that 4C is going to be tabled and we're going to move it to our next city council meeting.
May 20th, please. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Tim. Item 4D, amended budget increase for powerhouse entrance project. At the April 18th, 2023 city council meeting, the city approved entering into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, for a highway safety improvement program, which is HSIP. Project to relocate the entrance to the powerhouse and install LED stop signs in various, various locations in the city. During the course of construction, unforeseen circumstances, including underground conditions, required additional work outside the scope of the project and caused delays to the project. The total project increase proposed to cover these additional costs is $300,000. The city's IGA with ADOT to complete this project requires the city to cover any cost over the HSIP awarded amount. Therefore, the city is responsible to pay the full $300,000. This increase would be funded by City Highway User Fund Revenue Fund monies. Staff recommends approval. Tim, who are we gonna?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if I may, I'll, I'll just provide some of the information. Then Anthony Brozich, the district engineer for ADOT, is here to, to answer any additional questions as well. This project, as you all know, this is the project in front of the powerhouse. This was an HSIP project that we elected to pursue. The idea is to relocate the entrance of the powerhouse to align it with First Street. This would allow in the future to be able to place a light there, remove the, the hawk system, the crosswalk mid-block, and be able to move that back to this. So that, that was the purpose of this project. However, unfortunately, during the, the course of construction, there were some items found underground that were not identified in the plans that caused some, some delays and change orders to the contractor. And then basically, those delays and, and change orders have been negotiated through ADOT with that contractor and, and that's where we, we end up today is with this $300,000 increase. So with that, I'll, Ask Anthony might have missed on that.
Tim, you did very well. Thank you. There's not much else. Some of the underground items, I will add, we, we did look back at ASBO drawings and not a lot was identified. So the age of it, the ownership transition that has happened in this area over the years, a lot of that just was not found. So, and so we pulled the road up and saw it, it was, we just weren't sure what we were getting into. So.
Anthony, thanks, thanks for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
I know a lot of us as council and also city staff have been asked numerous times by our citizens, what is going on with this powerhouse, the traffic delays down there? And so question would be, obviously, if we, once we pay this $300,000, how fast is it going to be able to get done?
So we are working currently. We got back to work and the, looking to have paving done down there this month. The only thing left after that is probably the final striping. So should be soon.
So maybe by the end of the month then? Maybe?
Maybe, yes. Put that caveat there. But the anticipation is, at the end of the month is the current schedule.
Okay. Counselors, any questions for Anthony or Tim?
I do.
Vice Mayor?
Hi, Anthony.
Hello, Vice Mayor.
This is mostly for transparency for the public. So it's not to throw ADOT under the bus. I just want to preface it with that. However, I do want some things out into the public.
Yes.
So can you tell me whose engineer missed the water line or the, the, the items that were discovered that caused us all these problems? Was it, was it ADOT that hired the engineer to draw up the project?
I believe it's part of the HSIP project, we do.
Okay.
So, and I go back to my first statement about the record drawings. We do, do potholes when it seems prudent in certain cases. It is an expense upfront that it's HSIP funds don't cover too much of those. So we strategically do potholes, but at the same time, without accurate record drawings, we always run the risk of coming, running into the unknown. Abandoned pipes, abandoned drains, concrete slabs. I can go on. We found cars and everything else buried under roadways. It is just one of those chances you take.
Okay, so because, who makes the decision not to do the potholes?
It's discussed during development with ADOT staff, designers, city staff. It is a, through the development process on what potholes are needed for what.
Okay. All right. And ADOT assigns or awards the bid of the contract for the contractor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in my experience, looking back at this, that bid came in about $60,000 over, is that correct, Manager Walsh? When it originally came in?
Roughly.
So we were over budget $60,000. ADOT decided not to do potholes. So now the city, now the city is going to be responsible for the 300 and, well, now 360 if you count the $60,000 overage. I just want the public to understand that we really do have our hands tied in this awarding of funds that, you know, I mean, we got to pay ADOT. And it's, and it just seems to be a bit unfair for the City of Kingman. So I wanted to make sure that I got that out there in the public, that the city had no say in the contractor that was awarded the bid and we had no say in the engineer that drew up the, the project. So, but the city is on the hook because of the IGA and the agreement that we've made with ADOT that we are to pay any overages. Did I represent that correctly?
A couple corrections if I could.
Of course, of course.
The city was involved in the development process. They had a say on how we engaged and designed this project. They were part of that discussion. The bidding process is known at the time of engaging in the HSIP process. So by signing up for that funding source, that is understood how the bid is going to be taken. When a bid is over the engineer's estimate, we verify that funds are available. If not, we ask the city if they're willing to pay the extra. So those conversations do happen. There is partnership through the whole process.
All right. Well, thank you. That's all I wanted to get out into the public. Again, it's not my pleasure, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And of course, to add to that, this was a grant originally that we applied for and the funds covered a good chunk of it. But unfortunately, when there is an overage, then we become responsible for that overage.
Being a city came in driven request, yes. Tim and I had talked earlier about the other bids and I don't know if it makes it any easier, but the next lowest bidder was $288,000 above this one. So it's almost that price, which they would have found the same unforeseen conditions and probably asked for additional funds to take care of them. So it's not making that pill easier. I get it, but.
Yeah. Well, again, I appreciate you being in front of us.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry it's for these circumstances and I seem to always beat you up when you come and so please continue to come.
I will, I will.
Thank you, Anthony. And of course, it does help, Vice Mayor, as you pointed out, it does help all of us as citizens of Kingman understand the process and why we are having to pay this amount. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Any questions for Tim or Anthony, counsel, on this matter? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion then approving item 4D, amended budget increase for powerhouse entrance project?
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on. Item number five, public hearings, 5A. Ordinance number 1974, City of Kingman Municipal Code text amendment, consolidation of general plan implementation. A city initial, initiated text amendment to the City of Kingman Municipal Code, sections 2-136 and 2-137 to incorporate changes as reflected in the City of Count, City of Kingman general plan, specifically aligning the municipal code with the general plan and repealing applicable sections, sections which are adopted in the 2040 general plan. Staff recommends approval. Jason, welcome again.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. I got two items for you tonight that are very closely related, so. The first item before you tonight is actually a municipal code amendment and that actual amendment is, when we were going through our general plan and we were going through the municipal code, we were finding that portions of it were in the municipal code, portions of the implementation, how we went about through making text amendments and so forth, were both in municipal code and in the general plan. So the first action before you this evening is actually repeal certain portions of that municipal code. So that way we can take it out of the code and we'll actually incorporate it into the general plan. So we have one cohesive document with all of the implementation as well as the administration for the general plan in one location. So just a little bit of background, this particular item, the, the general plan itself came back, was ratified November 5th, 2024 by the City of Kingman's voting population that implemented the general plan 2040 that takes us through the next 10 years, which is our general plan. Essentially, it's our master plan for development within the city. When we were looking at that particular document and we were looking at potential future amendments that may be forthcoming, future developments that may be forthcoming, we did some analysis with respect to what projects may fall under as a minor versus a major and looking at other cities and jurisdictions, we, we realized that the City of Kingman, given its rural atmosphere still and the potential opportunities that forthcoming, it was severely restrictive when it came to what would be a minor general plan and a major general plan amendment. As you recall, back on January 7th, we became for this body and we were seeking direction as to whether or not we wanted to implement a change with respect to those thresholds. Some of those thresholds that we talked about at that time were leaving it the same, doing minor incremental changes. One was the half-section proposal or a full-section proposal. And at that time, the council gave staff direction to bring it back with the 320 acres, so a half-section. So before you, that is, the first part of the amendment tonight is really is to go through and within the municipal code itself, repeal the various sections that conflict with the general plan itself and to take those out of the municipal code. And then the second item before you tonight will be actually incorporating all of that language into our general plan along with the threshold amendments. So tonight, again, it's to simplify the general plan, its implementation, we'll be repealing a couple of sections out of the, out of the actual municipal code. And I'm going to bring those up real quick so you can see them. So out of municipal code, there will be some changes. We are, we are still keeping it within the municipal code. However, the first major change is in alignment with state statute. State statute changed when general plans can be amended. Previously, it had to be done within a 12-month or within a calendar year. That was changed to allow to be amended within a 12-month period from the date of application. So that's actually being incorporated into the municipal code itself. However, we go back in and we actually further define what major amendments are, what type of public hearings are required. That will be in the actual municipal code. However, the remaining implementation language, which is stricken and read before you, that actual language will be actually taken out of the municipal code and introduced into the general plan. So section 2-136 and 2-137 are the two areas that are being amended within the municipal code. I'll stop there. I'll ask if there's any questions before I continue.
Counsel? Okay. Thanks, Jason.
So this particular project, it was notified, noticed in the Kingman minor. There were no, no correspondence received in regards to this amendment for the municipal code. Based on the findings in your staff report, it is recommended by approval for the mayor and the city council to adopt ordinance 1974, amending and repealing portions of 2-136 and 2-137 of the Kingman Municipal Code. And again, they And again, available for any questions?
Okay, no questions? Thank you Jason for the, for the moment. If we have no questions, then this is a public hearing, so I want to open that public hearing for ordinance number nineteen seventy-four. Are there anybody, is there anybody in public that would like to make a statement or comment on this ordinance? Or online, nope? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. Counsel, we'd like to move forward on item number five A, ordinance number nineteen seventy-four. Can we have a motion approving that?
Show move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five B, this is the long one I get to read. GPA twenty-five dash zero 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 one, dash ordinance number nineteen seventy-five, general plan amendment to increase acreage thresholds for minor and major general plan amendments. And to clarify the timing, the application will be heard by city council. At their January seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting, the city council directed staff to move forward with updating the requirements for a major plan amendment. Staff drafted an amendment based on council direction and presented it to Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. The proposed amendment is a minor general plan text amendment to the City of Kingman General Plan, to increase the acreage thresholds to three hundred and twenty acres, as it pertains to minor and major amendments for the residential and non-commercial, non-commercial uses. This aligns with the goals and policies of the adopted general plan, supporting enhanced development opportunities for commercial and residential growth in potential annexation areas. Additionally, the amendment clarifies non-residential by specifying commercial and adding open space within the amendment table and language, and reflects legislative changes now requiring amendments to be heard within twelve months from the date of application. The proposed text amendment is intended to remove the restrictive acreage thresholds in order to encourage additional commercial and residential development. The increased thresholds and clarified timeframe for hearing applications will aid with expediting the development process, and will provide developers a shortened timeframe for processing general plan amendments in the future. As such, the amendment is in line with the overall vision of the city per the general plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends, recommended approval, voting seven zero. Jason, any other further comments, or counsel, any other questions for Jason on this, or do you need to comment more on this?
The only thing I was gonna do, Mayor Counsel, is I was gonna show you the actual table that's amended into the general plan, that does add for additional clarification, specifically the general plan as adopted originally, clumped commercial and open space into its same category. So although we received direction on how to deal with the residential, we did not want to clump the, the open space into that same category in commercial when it was all said and done, so we did break it out a little bit further. So as you can see on the table before you, there's no changes in regards to the downtown growth areas, that will all remain the same. However, on this particular table, it does talk about how major amendments, so any change three hundred and twenty acres, contiguous acres or more from one residential land use to another, would be a major amendment. Any change that is twenty to three hundred and nineteen would now be a minor amendment. And then when we get to the commercial or, or commercial land use for, to residential land use, again, this is where it was silent, it lumped them all together, we broke it out to be the same, three hundred and twenty contiguous acres for residential to a commercial or commercial land use to residential. And then at the very bottom, we, we talk about the open space, any change in three hundred and twenty contiguous acres or more from any open space land use designation to residential or commercial, and again, that's really to preserve our open space areas that we do have. It clarifies that from ten to three hundred and nineteen acres or anything that's under the three hundred and twenty, still would, would remain as a minor amendment. And then any change going from a residential land use to open space would be a major amendment. That was all I had this evening for counsel, available for any questions?
Thank you, counsel, any questions for Jason? Thank you. Okay, once again, this is a public hearing, so item five B, GPA twenty-five dash zero one, one, dash ordinance number nineteen seventy-five, I'd like to open that public hearing. Is there anybody here in chambers or online that would like to comment on this? Steve?
As someone who's dealing with the Mojave County general plan at this point, I believe it's important that there, to understand, making development of a smoother process is really a good thing for the people. There are plenty of safeguards to protect against abuse of power by developers. That is probably one of the smaller worries we have in our city and county. So I so totally encourage supporting this amendment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to close this public hearing. Counsel, can we have a motion then approving, or is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? Can we have a motion approving item five B, GPA twenty-five dash zero zero one, dash ordinance number nineteen seventy-five?
Show move.
We have a motion, we have a second, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on, on our agenda, item six, department reports. Six A, Kingman Municipal Court Department Report. We'd like to welcome Judge Singer.
Looking for the timer.
It's on.
We were gonna bring an hourglass, you know, to put it, but we forgot it.
What order do you want them in? What do you want to start with, and then we'll have, you can ask IT to swap them for you if you'd like.
Okay, we'll start with the, we'll start with the veterans.
Okay.
Alright. Evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. Honored and privileged to bring you my annual report, which primarily focuses, as usual, on our specialty courts, and I wanted to share with you all what's going on across the street over at KMC, and primarily with the, with the treatment courts and what's going on, and again, give you all the opportunity of, you know, the three specialty courts that we've had in different longevities, from the vet court that's lasted almost my entire tenure, to the youth court, which we just started, and kind of give you updates on where we go, and where we're headed with all, all three of the programs, and kind of gives you all a barometer of, you know, what the, what the programs are doing and, and what I see for them, not only short term but long term here. And what we'll, I guess we'll start with, we'll start with the, an oldie but a goodie, the veterans' court. So again, the veterans' court has been in existence since December ninth, two thousand fifteen. We are up to a hundred and ten graduates, we have three graduating this month on May twenty-first, and we're just rocking and rolling, but I've always found, as usual, I present you all this annual survey every year, I always find the, the evaluations, the summary evaluations of the graduates to be kind of the best, I don't know, report card of what's going on with the vet court, what we're doing right, what we need to improve on, and because, I mean, this gives them their opportunity, they, they have no reason to give anything but the honest answers here, because we give it to them at graduation, I don't have my hooks on them anymore, so they give them to us, they're anonymous, they don't turn them into me, they turn them into the front counter, and then we just accumulate them, and then they're given to me, you know, at the end of the year, and we do it on a calendar year basis. So this sums up the, and I've given you all, hopefully you all have had the opportunity to see this, a copy of the summary for the evaluation for the two thousand twenty-four graduates, we had fourteen graduates, thirteen completed the survey, one was a unique graduation, he, older gentleman, he had a stroke right before graduation, and so then he was sent from Kingman to Las Vegas, and we did his graduation with his family at the nursing home in, in Las Vegas. And he is still in the nursing home in Las Vegas, and I go up and see him about every weekend in Las Vegas, I'm looking forward to, the family, we're getting close to getting him back home to family in Ohio, so we're, we're getting close, so it's, so that he's obviously the only one who didn't complete the evaluation, but, but still, he was very worthy of graduating, and, and still comes to our events, came to our, our hockey event, we brought him on the ice. Special place in my heart, so, anyway. The, the evaluation for the other thirteen, nothing, not a lot really jumps out on me other, from, you know, all the other years that we put this together, the only thing that I could say is on the third page, I don't, I don't know if we've ever had perfect like this, which is, and I believe they're being honest with me, did you stay clean and sober since you started veterans' court? All thirteen said yes, and we've never had a hundred percent on that, and they've usually been pretty honest on that and everything, and, and so I, I found that surprising, I mean, it's, I'm encouraged by it, and I, I believe it to be true, but of course, that's one of the main goals, is, you know, having sobriety in the program, as well as all the other things that we try to encompass in it, so. Other, other than that, you know, the, the answers are pretty consistent with what we see with the veterans' treatment court with our, with our graduates, and we're, you know, very proud of them. You know, the, the aspect that we're, we, our challenge, our biggest challenge in the veterans' treatment court is the alumni. And you can see one of the answers here that kind of, and, and this has been consistent over the last few years or whatever, would you consider becoming a mentor at some point? Half said yes, half said no, and that's one of the ways we try to, you know, bring them back into the alumni, as well as our events, you know, softball and bowling and hikes and all those good things, because we want them to still feel a part of our vet court family, we don't want to see what happened to them in the military, as I've alluded to before, you know, they have that structured camaraderie, they get out of the military, and then they sort of go by the wayside, well, we don't want to do that, repeat that pattern in the vet court, so we try to keep them engaged if they want to become mentors, or through our other events and activities, we try to do our best, but it's been our biggest challenge, I've directed our former mentor coordinator, his sole role is alumni relations, trying to stay engaged with them, trying to stay connected with them, you know, I started that, I guess you can call it a newsletter, whatever you all want to call it, I sent it to you all too, that one page thing, I do that once a month, kind of lights my journalism fire from back in the day, but to try to keep the alumni engaged there and keep everybody informed of things going on, so. That, that's our biggest challenge, but again, the vet court, we're at a hundred and ten graduates, and hopefully you all can join us for the, that next vet court graduation on May twenty-first, it means a lot when you all are there. And we'll have the Veterans Resource Team lunch in the Mayor's Challenge and Veterans Homelessness at noon as well, if you'd like to take part of that, so. So that, I think sums up about vet court, I don't know if you all want to ask me questions, go program to program here, if you just want to wait till the end, or.
Questions so far about veterans' court? I think most of us had a chance to attend veterans' court, and
Right.
It's a great thing Judge.
Well, I appreciate, and I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to, to do it. I guess, second, we'll, we'll jump over to the, the domestic violence court, are they gonna do it, or do I? Oh, look at that. Okay, domestic violence court, just to, again, doesn't get as much popularity, I, I kind of consider it kind of like vet court light, it's got kind of the same or similar components to the vet court, but not, it's not identical, I mean, you know, you don't have mentors, you don't, I mean, don't take them out, play softball, but things like that, but it's still very, very important, because from my understanding, like KPD had a report recently, you know, they talk about how domestic violence is such a serious thing, and I'm sure that they would concur that probably the most serious calls they go out on are domestic violence calls, so we're trying to assist every way we can there from the, from the court perspective. Do I take control of it now? Okay. Okay, you all do it, wherever you are. Okay, um, okay, let's just, okay, we're just gonna do bullet point by bullet point, alright. Again, just the DV court established in two thousand twenty-two. By the way, this PowerPoint that I put together, I just, I'm cheating, I just had to put it together, we just got recently, we applied, there aren't very many domestic violence courts in this country, and I found out last year about this program, I want to make sure I get it right, it's on here, it is the Center for Justice Innovation, that they kind of helped sponsor and oversee domestic violence courts, and again, to my knowledge, we're only the second one in the state of Arizona, and one of the mentee courts is actually in Tucson, and so I applied for us to become a, they're one of the mentor courts, we, for us to be a mentee court, to sort of know, okay, what are we doing right, what are the other courts doing, because there's not, it's not like drug courts or even like vet courts, there's over five hundred vet courts now in the country, if not that main domestic violence court, so. So we got accepted, they're actually taking me and my team to St. Louis for a conference in June, and so, but I need to present there, and they want me to present a PowerPoint, a brief one, about the, our domestic violence court and what we're doing, so, this kind of, this is what we'll, we'll be presenting, but it kind of sums up for you all who don't know what we're doing with the domestic violence court. Go ahead, we can just start rocking and rolling through it. Yep. The, I don't just, I don't want to just read to you, but, I mean, again, our mission is to increase accountability of defendants, enhance victim safety, okay, now we're going too fast, provide increased information, reduce recidivism, alright, go ahead. It's kind of freaking me out, because I, where are they? They're, oh, they're in IT downstairs, oh, okay, alright. Alright, who participates is the target population, again, it's misdemeanor, domestic violence offenders charged with domestic violence components, and again, we work with the city attorney's office, they're the ones who make the offers for the defendants to come into the domestic violence court program. A lot of times, the carrot at the end of the stick is that their charges will be, you know, reduced or dismissed if they come into the DV court program. Having a DV, a domestic violence court conviction tag on your criminal record, I'll just put it this way, it just sucks in Arizona, I mean, it's brutal, you're gonna have problems getting employed, you know, your gun rights are, are affected, it's, it's rough. So if the, if the city attorney's office and the prosecutors feel like, you know, somebody is worthy of, you know, having that part removed for, off their record, then we put them in the DV court program, so it's, they have some incentive to do that, you know, and I, I think I presented on this when I first started this a few years ago, why did we want to do it? It's because I was tired of seeing the same people get into domestic violence cases over and over and over, they are tired of seeing the same people get domestic violence cases over and over and over, and on top of that, by law, they have to do domestic violence counseling, which is between twenty-six to fifty-two weeks, and they weren't doing it, and I was having to do all these order show cause hearings, it was just a waste of my time, waste of my staff's time, and they wouldn't show up for, and it was, and it was just becoming a headache, and it was like, well, now, if we put them in the street to court, and I can keep my thumb on them, and make sure they come to court every single month, our next review docket is tomorrow, and, and get the weekly reports from the providers who are overseeing the counseling here locally, and also UA testing them, because that was a big issue too with our DV cases, shockingly, and doing everything else, and putting them on supervised probation, and in doing home visits, and doing everything that we need to do to make sure that they're in compliance, and that they're actually getting the help that they need, as well as, you take components kind of similar to vet court, where we're trying to look at big picture too, how are we helping the family? Okay, did you get these DV charges because you're unemployed? Did you get these DV charges because you need resources, because you need housing, things like that? And that way, we could utilize the resources that we're now so familiar with because of the vet court, and institute, you know, the non-VA ones for the, the DV court participants and their families and things like that, so, it's been, that's been beneficial, and also, I, I think we're doing some good, and I'll, we'll get to the end here, and we'll, I, I think the, the proof is in the numbers. Alright, go ahead. Yeah, most, like I said, most of the cases will have, they're, at least the DV tag dismissed, or the entire case dismissed. Requirements of the program, I think I just went through that, the counseling, sometimes, everybody does DV counseling, but sometimes we have to have them do more counseling, because substance abuse, we'll put them in rehab, we'll put them in revival, put them in hickory, whatever we need to do, they have to do random drug and alcohol testing if, if substances are an issue, inpatient or residential treatment, all directives of supervised probation, including home visits, that's huge, and ten monthly review hearings, and always the catch-all, any other requirement deemed appropriate by the judge, that's my favorite, so. Okay, go ahead. And then just, this sums up who the, yeah, the DV court members are, and centers around our, our program coordinator. The numbers, okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. Um, this is what sums it up because I can sit here and just hypothesize and give you all vague stuff all night long. As of April twenty twenty five, there have been a hundred and seventeen defendants participate in our program since its inception in twenty twenty two. And to date, seventy four participants have successfully completed program. They were able to complete their required counseling, remain clean and sober and be law abiding. That's huge. I mean, that's in three years. We currently have twenty five active participants in the Kingman Municipal Court, uh, DV Court program. So we stay pretty hooked up. That's about consistent with the Vet Court. Sometimes DV Court even gets higher than Vet Court in, as far as numbers. Benchmark goal for all Kingman's Municipal Court specialty programs is have its recidivism rate under five percent. And now the uh, DV Court program, it's funny how the most important thing is blocked off there. Um, is under three percent. So again, you can, I can sit here for hours and, and bore you all to death about specialty courts. And we can talk about all the bells and whistles and all the softball games and all the counseling and all of the, whatever else we do or whatever. What I preached, I preached to the Citizens Academy last week, I'll preach to anybody. We could talk about all these treatment courts forever and all the, throughout the state and throughout the nation, it all comes down to one thing. One thing, and it's that last statement there. It's the recidivism. That's all it comes down to. The other stuff is just secondary, whatever. But if you're, if your people are not, are reoffending, what are you doing? What's the point of these programs? Why are you spending money and resources and funds and everything if they're reoffending? That's what it all comes down to, in my opinion. Different judges have different opinions. That's my belief and I'll go to the grave believing it. That if you're, you know, because some of these specialty courts, their recidivism rates are astronomical. It's like, what's the point? No, it's, are they reoffending? Are they becoming productive members of society? Are they staying out of trouble? Are they learning what they're supposed to be doing in the counseling and treatment and getting, uh, their issues addressed? Put all the wheels down to. The rest of this is great and a lot of it's fluff, but it all comes down to recidivism. So am I seeing them again? And thankfully for the DV Court and the Vet Court is the same way. Knock on, this isn't wood, but I'm very superstitious. Both under three percent, recidivism. It's, I, DV Court may be even a, a little bit better. I um, I'm very, very proud of it. And I got, I give credit to the city attorney's office because it was a group meeting. It was prosecutors who were, who were here before us that came to me and the defense attorneys had said, why don't we do something about DV Court? And start a program. I thought, okay, of course, we don't know what DV Court is because there's only one other one in the state of Arizona. But our friends in Tucson have helped us out immensely and I think it's been quite successful. So I give so much credit to the prosecutors, the city attorney's office and all of the other providers who have helped us get to where we're at. Moving forward. Again, when we established this in, like I said, in twenty twenty two, I think we were the second DV Court program in the state of Arizona. Uh, if I only say Tucson. Oh, side note, um, okay, and that's why I talked about the mentor program. This is my favorite part of like government, federal government. Oh, nobody from the other hears this or whatever, but I just find this hilarious that if you go to the neck, go to the next point. Okay, so as I said, there's not that many DV Courts in the country. There's one who's a mentor program who helps other DV Courts in the state of Arizona and throughout the country, and that's in Tucson. So who did Kingman get assigned to? Idaho. Makes sense, doesn't it? So, and Tucson is a mentor court and I think, I thought for sure they were getting assigned to them, but no, we got assigned to Idaho, but whatever. Um, and this is, I don't want to butcher the name of the county, but it's up in Coeur d'Alene. I think they did it based on size because Tucson's so much bigger than us and this court in Coeur d'Alene is similar sized to us. So that's why they assigned us to them. I just thought. But the, the court down in Tucson, Judge Millian has been very helpful and um, in helping us with issues with our DV Court and getting off the ground and everything too. Next. And I talked about, we're going to St. Louis in June. We're excited about that and they're paying for it, so it's awesome. Um, and then the goal for the program is to learn from others, network challenges, resources. So that's the DV Court. Any, any questions?
Counsel, Counselor Saly.
Uh, thank you, Judge. I had um, asked the uh, police chief about your court process um, during his report because I was concerned about the increase in domestic violence cases citywide. And so I really appreciate that you're following up with your report right afterwards and we can see how successful it's been. My question to you is, um, would this program work with the more serious felony offenders? Would it be worth trying to appeal to the county to start a program like this to help uh, reduce those numbers on the police reports?
Yeah, for the felony, if they're at the felony level, it's either because of one, and Carl can correct me. One, based on severity of the DV offense. Or two, because of the number of DV convictions they had after a certain number of misdemeanor convictions, you know, goes to a felony. Um, would it be helpful? Sure, I believe in all specialty courts. Um, you know, we haven't been approached by the county. You know, we do take some, some cases get pled down from the um, Justice Court and even Superior Court to us with the Vet Court. Um, but a big reason we can do that is we also have a grant that allows us to do that and then it comes to, you know, as far as if we're talking about our program, again, business is booming right now, but would this, for us specifically at Kingman Muni, but would this be beneficial um, at the felony level? Sure. Now, I don't know how many felony DV cases though actually get probation or they actually just go to prison. So I don't know. So again, I don't know if it's based on, you know, if, if it's severe enough, even if it's a first time, if they're sending them to prison. Or if it's after, you know, several misdemeanor convictions that they're just sending them to prison. I don't know the answer to that. But if they are putting them like on probation or some type of supervised probation, sure, a program like this I think would be great. Because I, again, the numbers speak for themselves and I really think our, what we're doing is having an impact. So.
Yeah, it definitely is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I did have a question. Um, thank you for this and all the specialty court attention that you give to our citizens. It's, it's obviously working. I, I had a question about the length of the time somebody is in this program. Let's say they just sail through, they do everything as they're asked to do of you. Um, what's an average uh, stay for them in this program?
Great question. Um, I'll bounce back. That court is longer. That court is, you cannot finish that court unless you're in it minimum seven months. And we say seven to eighteen months, but heck, I had somebody in it for six years. But anyway, uh, that's the average, you know, seven to eighteen months. DV Court is a little bit different. DV Court is when you're in the program, as soon as you, as long as you've complied with everything else, as soon as you get done with the domestic violence counseling, you'll finish my program. Now, domestic violence counseling is twenty, minimum twenty six to fifty two weeks. So that kind of gives you the range and everything, but as long as we're keeping our thumb on them, or excuse me, I need to correct myself. Not twenty six to fifty two weeks, twenty six to fifty two classes. Because sometimes you can double up on classes, um, and you could do two classes a week. So that would actually take it down from, if you really were gung ho, you could get done with it in thirteen weeks. So, but during that time then, you cannot complete the program unless you've finished domestic violence counseling. You've been clean and sober the whole time. Um, you know, no further law violations. You've been coming to court every month and things like that. But I can then say that every single graduate has completed, and it has to be certified domestic violence counseling. You know, sometimes they say, oh, well, I found this online thing or blah, blah, blah. No, no, no. It has to be certified domestic violence counseling approved by the state of Arizona. Um, and we have, you know, a, a couple, two or three agencies here locally that do it who are certified. And um, it's got to be one, by one of the approved agencies. So they can get through it and sometimes I, I gotta give the attorneys credit too. Because even before they plead into DV Court, sometimes they'll have them get going with the domestic violence counseling. So we have had some individuals that by the time I took their plea into DV Court, they're already like a quarter of the way done with DV counseling, which is impressive. And so then it's like, well, that's, and the sooner you can get through this, but so, you know, as soon as you complete the DV counseling and you've complied with all the other terms and everything, you'll graduate.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Savage.
Good morning.
Hello.
Just joking. Thank you for having me, Judge.
I know I've been talking a while, but yeah.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, it takes two to tango.
Okay.
Going through your court, are there couples that are going through your court simultaneously? Do you keep them apart? How, how does that work on your end?
It does take two to tango, you're right. And we have had that situation where a couple, yes, it's not common, but it has happened. Um, we have had um, um, two, you know, husband and wife that have come through the DV Court. Uh, obviously they have different, we assign them different counsel and everything, but yes, if it, if one's gonna get it and the other one doesn't have a record either. I mean, then if you're giving it to one, you should give it, you know, to both and everything. Yes. Most of those circumstances, usually they've reconciled. Um, I think almost every, every scenario in that they've typically reconciled. But at least when they're in the program, they're having to do the mandatory counseling and maybe they're learning. And in those rare scenarios, I think we've also had them do like, um, you know, counseling, like marital or relationship counseling too. In, along with the DV counseling so that we're, you know, successful when we, when we get out. Uh, we have had, um, on a side note, we've had, had some that are one in veteran, Veterans Court and one in DV Court. We have had that and that are still in relationships. We've had that happen more than once. Uh, because if they're a veteran, we're gonna put, put them in Veterans Court above DV Court. But if they're not a veteran, then if it's DV charges, obviously that's the direction we're gonna go. So we've done that too. So they've been in treatment simultaneously, doing similar things and everything. I don't think we've ever had where it's been, you know, the two, whatever you want to call them, combatants or whatever, in the program simultaneously where they haven't reconciled. I haven't encroached that yet, but I'm, you know, you do this long enough, you'll see everything. So that's possible. And in a situation like that, we'll just have to deal with it and we'll just have to figure it out. Um, and you know, if they don't want to be around each other, that's fine. I mean, you can, the one, one time a month you have to come to court, you can sit on opposite sides of the courtroom and things like that. And we have safety measures in place. So we haven't encountered that where, where they're hostile against each other, but we'll be ready for it if it happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Judge on this matter? Okay, actually Judge, I do have one quick question just as a review. Recidivism, did you mention what our recidivism is rate for the Vet Court?
Yeah, it's under three percent. It's a, I think it's like two point eight or two point nine. Um,
Of course, the goal is five percent or less and so
What's that?
The, the goal is five percent or less also?
My personal goal is five percent. The, as I've said, if y'all want to know what the recidivism goals are, you know, this is all based off of drug courts. Drug courts were the original treatment courts. They started forty years ago. You know, sorry now, you're gonna get me ranting and raving, but it's the mayor's fault here. Um, the um, you know, your average defendant on average is recidivism rate, it's not a specialty court or treatment court, is gonna be probably in the range of sixty five to seventy percent. They will reoffend if they're not in any kind of treatment court. Then we started drug courts years and years ago and that cut it about in half. So drug courts, if they can get their graduates to reoffend, you know, maybe a third of the time, thirty three percent to thirty five percent, that's kind of the gold standard or the kind of the mark, at least that's cutting it way down. Veterans Courts, the goal is, the gold standard is ten percent. I've made my court personally, the goal, five percent. We're under three percent. Again, I'm not bragging. I get way too much credit. I'm just the pretty face. I mean, it's the team that, that does it. It's the counselors, it's the lawyers, it's the therapists, it's the administrators, it's, it's everybody else. I get way too much credit. It's the VA, everybody. So anyway, those, that's, that's where the numbers are at. So that's where our, yes, when I say shoot for five percent, I think that when we do our little book and goals or whatever, I shoot for five percent. But if you can, if you can do a Vet Court under ten percent, that's really what the, the national standard is, what they want you to be at.
Right, thanks Judge. I knew it was a great number, but I just wanted to remind everybody that
Right.
of, of the job that you and your team are doing. So I appreciate that. Okay.
Next, last, not least, um, my two favorite words, youth court. Um, um, okay, um.
That's the right one, Aaron. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Okay, I just wanted to give you all a little flow chart. Again, we started the youth court. I, I came and spoke to y'all um, last year about what we're, we're trying to do. Again, it was, you know, we had inquiries, you know, from law enforcement. We had inquiries from KUSD and, you know, we were about, you know, maybe addressing more of the, the youth head on here at, at Kingman Municipal. And um, you know, at the time, we just had, we had a truancy court and it was like, well, we had a truancy court to deal with truancy. Then we had just random sporadic juveniles that they would cite. And so we had like a, a small juvenile docket. And now I was being asked like by the schools to deal with, um, you know, all these other things that happen on campus, you know, vaping and tobacco and all that stuff. And then I was like, oh, that sounds like fun. Now I'm gonna deal with juveniles in three different manners. It was like, that doesn't make any sense. So that's why I said, no, now we're going to youth court. So I, we invented a youth court. Um, fun. So youth court, we started um, at the uh, the goal was to start at the beginning of this year. And um, and I was just shocked. I, I, I thought we were gonna get about maybe, oh, from law enforcement and the schools, maybe about five to ten citations a month. Um, I think the first week I had like forty five on my desk. Yes, yeah, yeah. So my first intentions were to say, okay, city attorney, we're gonna send all these over to your office and then we're gonna decide from there about youth court. We're gonna put them all in youth court. We're gonna do all this and that and everything. And then um, I could just feel the rage from the city attorney's office when I, when I was doing that. I said, okay, there's got to be a better, better way to do this and everything. So, um, because then it was, then we're gonna get swamped under. It was like, we can't run, if I'm getting forty five on my first week and then, you know, getting all these complaints, I, we've had hundreds now that have come in. We've been doing this for what, going on five months now. It's like, there's no way I'm gonna, we could put hundreds of kids into a youth court. I mean, it, I mean, it wouldn't be efficient, it wouldn't be effective, it would be, it would be ridiculous. So then I said, okay, I need to revamp here and go back and figure out, how am I gonna deal with these juveniles and everything? So after about, oh, fifty versions, here's my final flow chart that I finally came up with and my staff and everybody, and I'm sure the city attorneys, everybody. Stacy Mayo was just, they were going nuts because I kept revamping this, revamping this. But I think we've got it nailed down here between myself and Judge Viederman on how we do this. So I probably should have flipped this in reverse, but that's fine. We can start with this page. This is youth court. So who goes into youth court? What, we, we get all these complaints either from law enforcement or from the school system and decide who's gonna go into the, the youth court, which is again, a treatment court, just like you can, again, you can call it like Veterans Court light, DV Court light. But again, tailored towards the, the juveniles and their families and figuring out what we're gonna do with them. Um, and so I wanted to highlight just how we're, how they, they get into the program. So this is what I came up with. Um, if you're gonna get into the youth court, we have then regular reviews and we break it up. We have a middle school docket, we have a high school docket. Again, I didn't think we were gonna have so many of both, but anyway. We had to break it up into two review groups and everything. So if you're gonna come into the youth court, this is what we're gonna offer you. Um, and again, this is with work with the city attorney's office too, is we're gonna suspend your prosecution. These matters are all gonna come to the court and then uh, we are going to suspend prosecution. Which means, okay, hopefully this won't go on your record and hopefully this won't haunt you and things like that. So if you have any of these, this is where the, my, this is, it's like a beautiful mind here. Uh, we came up with, you um, you get two or more of the spirit, the liquor offenses, two or more of the uh, violations that involve marijuana or paraphernalia, you're coming into youth court. If you get a title, a class one or class two Title twenty eight violation, that's like a DUI, a reckless driving, those type of things. I figure with the way kids drive around here, unfortunately, and some of the effects that we've had. At first I wasn't gonna put um, vehicular offenses in youth court, but I've had enough. Um, so they come in. Uh, truancy, now we've instead have some truancy court. You're truant, you're coming in. Interfering judicial proceedings, city ordinance violations. Yeah, any of those, they're coming into youth court. And then we break them up into what track we send them in. Um, again, you can see we have a project impact program that's run through the school. It's an eight week program that's overseen by the school. It's broken up into middle schools and high schools that deals with all kinds of behavioral issues and things like that. Eight weeks that they have to go to every week. Um, if it's a uh, Title twenty eight violation, we're gonna put them in um, a traffic survival school. Or if it happens to be like a DUI or something like that, then we'll put them in DUI counseling and, and go down that route. And then these other ones, we have different life skills programs and, and counseling programs that we'll, we'll put them in. You do that, you abide by all the other rules and I should have brought the rules with me. But you know, again, it's, you remain law abiding. You're gonna be doing UA testing, which may be a shocker for some juveniles. Get ready, you're doing it because it's, you know, I don't know if it shocked y'all, it kind of shocked me a little bit, but how many, when we do their baseline test, came back positive for alcohol, drugs, marijuana, things like that? So you're gonna be doing regular UA testing. You're, we, we got access to your grades. We're getting into synergy. We're gonna be tracking your grades and we're gonna be tracking your attendance. And you have to have, you have to have passing grades and no unexcused absences. And, uh, you know, someone were like, gee, passing grades, I'm like, zero. So I get it, you know, we're gonna be reasonable, but we wanna see progress moving up, you know? Um, and that, that you're, you know, making the efforts. Um, we're gonna help the family. Okay, is this because we don't have internet? Is this because we're having trouble paying the electric bill? Is this, you know, whatever else is going on so we can connect them with resources? Is this because the, the family's homeless? And so again, the resources that we've been able to develop in our other treatment courts, we can share with the families here and get these things addressed. Uh, counseling, we're gonna get them with Southwest Behavior, Mojave Mental Health, if that's an issue. I actually have, um, a psychiatrist, a doctor who specializes with youth, who, um, I'm not gonna swamp him, but is in the valley. And he's been willing to take on select cases and free of charge. So, and so they do virtual counseling and everything for the ones who are, you know, again, it's kinda like vet court. If you've, you've had a, been a heroin addict for forty years, just signing up into the program, like that doesn't fix it. Well, if you're, you know, a juvenile and youth and you've had all, you know, all these issues growing up and, you know, maybe been in foster homes or things like that, just coming into youth court isn't gonna just fix it. So we wanna see, we wanna see big picture so we can address these things and hopefully they don't become adults into our system. So that's what we're doing. So suspension of prosecution, if they're successfully completed, the case is closed and dismissed. Unsuccessful, unsuccessful completion, say that three times fast, we refer to the city attorney and they're gonna just resume prosecution and good luck. So we can go to the next page. And this is, this is my last page, I know you guys are grateful for that. Uh, juvenile dispositions for non-youth court. Um, again, so like I said, I couldn't put everybody in youth court. But I do want, you know, again, KPD, KUSD and everybody to know, we are still addressing these things. I just came from court here at four o'clock dealing with the, the youth. And I was timing myself so I could get out of there by five. And, and I said, one of the points I made to them was, each and every one of you in here, um, again, I, you're, you're coming in here and we split it up. I have Judge Viderman because he focuses on the ones who are coming to the youth court. I focus on the ones who I'm arraigning them and, and coming, they're not in the youth court, the, this group here that's in the green. And I, I made a point of them. I said, I want this next hour to be very uncomfortable for y'all. Because I want you all to know that hopefully you never come in front of a judge again. And having to bring your parent and having to come in front of a judge, I hope this is scary. I hope this is, um, you know, life-changing and I hope that you all learn here. So for the non-youth court, again, if they've just had one of the offenses listed here of the liquor or marijuana paraphernalia, if it's, um, a curfew violation, the first time tobacco or tobacco paraphernalia, either on campus or, you know, out in, if they run into law enforcement or a class three Title twenty-eight violation, that would be like, like an excessive speed. So that's the lowest level moving violation, not like a reckless driving or anything like that, but the, like a speeding. Then again, in that scenario, we're gonna suspend prosecution, but then I'm gonna send them to one of these things. The project impact program, again, the eight-week program put on by the school. Uh, life skills, Healthy Futures is a great program we've partnered with, with the county. It's a tobacco program that they have to go to, actually they have to go to with their parent or guardian. Um, it's a one-time class on a Friday, so it's not during school, so they can go to that. And again, all this is at no cost to the families and everything, whether it's project impact, the Healthy Futures, the counseling, you know, all, all those things. So, and they go do that class or the, uh, defensive driving if it's like an excessive speed. And then, oh, I, I set it for a check file date, um, about, oh, three or four months, about, yeah, three or four months down the road. And then I list all the other parameters. They still have to do the other things like you have to do in youth court. No unexcused absences. You have to follow the rules at home and at school. You have to stay clean sober, get no more violations, have no contact with law enforcement. If you do that, then when we do the check file and we've got proof that they did whatever class we put them in and, and we don't have any other reports, then we close and dismiss the case. Otherwise, if they don't, goes to the city attorney's office. And, um, so that's that. And then the other two here, again, again, it's, uh, these are still court cases. So if they decide they don't want either the non-youth court offer or the youth court offer, and like today, we had one, don't want the youth court up, that's great. Then we set it for a pre-trial with the prosecutors, prosecution continues on. And, uh, they can deal with the prosecutors and then they can see if they can come up with a resolution or we'll just have a hearing. I mean, they have every, we have due process, every right to do that. And then either they come up with an agreement, we do a change of plea, or we'll have a, we'll have a trial. Or the next part, the, the dark part here, juvenile has an open case in Mojave County probation. If we get the reports from law enforcement or KUSD and they're already with Mojave County probation, they don't, they don't get the one free bite at the apple. And I'm not calling this free bite the apple, but if they already have history and everything, you're going, we're just sending you straight up to the county probation. We're not gonna deal with you and we refer those cases and they can just deal with them because they've already got the history and they probably need to deal with them more severely than what I can do. That's juveniles in youth court. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions considering everything?
I'd like to say thank you for caring for our community like you do. I mean, it shows in all these programs you do, I'm, I'm impressed.
Oh, thank you. Well, I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to do them. I believe in these specialty courts and, um, you know, without y'all's support, um, I couldn't do them, so I appreciate it.
I do have one question, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Um, in the juvenile court, how accountable are you holding the parents and their guardians?
Well, if they don't do what the kids say, we put them in jail. I'm kidding. Again, at this point, holding, at this, again, let me put it this way. If it's a situation involving, if we feel like if law enforcement or the school feels like it's a situation where it's the parent or guardian to blame, they'll be coming, they'll have charges, they'll be brought to me for like child neglect or, or, or educational neglect. And they'll be coming to me in the adult system. If they're coming to me in this fashion in the youth, in the juvenile system, then we're, it's pretty much focused on the juvenile. So we have a way to, you know, if it's something like, you know, that's why it's, you, you look at truancy and like, you know, high schoolers or whatever. Um, if you're talking truancy and it's a first grader, obviously it's probably the parent. And that's why we're, they'll be cited and they'll have to come to me in a criminal fashion like that. So that, so i- if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions for Judge? Once again, I think we all echo what Counselor Walker said, we thank you for, well, your enthusiasm and continuing to do these and offer these, these special treatment courts. It's a huge deal and it helps our citizens become better people too. So thank you Judge Singer.
Thank you, and I did this right in time, the Golden Knights dropped puck in two minutes, so perfect.
There you go.
And I do wanna say, I'm missing a playoff game tonight for to be with you all.
Oh, wait, wait, one more thing. Does everybody know that the softball game between our vet court and?
Lake Havasu, yeah. Beat them fifteen to five, so trophy's back in the courtroom, so, well, uh, we're very proud, very proud of that. So proud to have our trophy back in Kingman, so.
Congratulations on that.
But they'll be ready for us in the fall, I'm sure, so.
Yes.
Back in Havasu. All right, well, thank y'all.
Thank you Judge Singer.
May I ask you a councilman?
I'm sorry, that's just, it's just a department report, so if you wanted to follow the judge out and ask him questions, you could.
It's about the, uh, process.
Probably should save that and, and talk to the judge and then, and bring those comments maybe at the next city council meeting at, uh, public comment, if you could. Thank you. Item six B legislative update, um, Tim and Mr. Dorn?
We have Mr. On, Mr. Dorn online with us. Tom, you're muted, Tom. There we go. Uh, sorry about that, Mayor, council members, uh, everybody, nice to see all of you. Um, that, that judge needs a TV show, man. He was pretty good. He, he was entertaining, I'm sitting here, I, I'm, I'm enjoying the whole thing, so, uh.
I don't know if we wanna let him know that or not.
Maybe he's calling. Anyway, uh, in the interest of time, in case any of you care about hockey too, uh, I'll go very fast. Um, but just to give you a legislative update on where things are now. Uh, we are on day one hundred and fourteen, as you know, and that's, uh, two weeks over what the founding fathers of our state intended. So, but they didn't have per diem back then, I'm sure. So we're, uh, we're still at it and, uh, going on. And what we have is the legislature has decided that they are going to, uh, take a couple of weeks off. And, uh, it's disappointing that this has become the norm now. Uh, we used to put our head down, work hard, get through it, because everybody had to go back to their jobs. Um, and it's just, it's just a different world now and we take breaks and it is the way it is, instead of pushing through and getting a budget and being done. Uh, but that's my commentary and that's, that's sticking to it. Uh, anyway, we have, um, ninety-three laws, but not far behind, we have seventy-six vetoes. So, uh, Governor Hobbs has been busy just vetoing everything. And, and a lot of these bills are just, you know, they're ridiculous, it's, a lot of them are just bait for her to veto. Uh, we have, you know, DEI stuff, uh, bathroom bills. Um, yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're serious issues, don't get me wrong. Uh, but it's just things that are being sent up, uh, that, that we know that she will be vetoing. But, uh, we'll probably see more of those next year with an election. But th- those are, those are the big ones. Um, with regard to, uh, the big issues, uh, what we're dealing with also is the agency directors, that's just continuing. Uh, we, we, we're getting to where the, the J-Cop, Senator Hoffman Committee Tribunal is, um, for agency directors is becoming so, so ridiculous. So we have legislators that are choosing to not even, we have, uh, candidates that are choosing to resign. Uh, then not even go through the process of being ripped apart by the committee on, uh, uh, nominations. And, uh, we, recently we just had the head of the Department of Health Services, uh, resign. And we also had the access director, uh, she resigned. They both resigned instead of going through, um, this, this grinder that we now have, instead of just letting the, like, the health committee chair in those situations, uh, uh, do the nominations. And, um, it, it, so that's unfortunate. Whoever's governor, um, the governor should probably get his or her agency directors confirmed after, after a responsible review. That's one of the big issues. Uh, our top issue, of course, water. Uh, uh, I'm sure you've all seen the correspondence, uh, that we had from the governor's office that, uh, went, went to Representative Griffin and Senator Dunn, basically calling everyone out for not wanting to work, uh, for, for a deal. And, uh, so there's just this sense that we're gonna have, the governor's probably going to do an AMA in the Hila Bend area. Uh, it would be nice if we can get some protections for Walupai. Uh, but that, that all remains to be seen, there's still a lot of session and then, and this will be part of the budget negotiation. We, and as we've talked about before, um, you know, that ag to urban issue is still out there. And that's very important to the people in Maricopa County on the fringe as well, meaning the fringe of the people, not the fringe people. The, um, the fringe of the population where people still have farms, uh, as well as in Pinal County, uh, legislation that will transfer their land from agriculture into urban development along with the water rights. And so, uh, you know, our urge to Governor Hobbs is to not do any ag to urban deal for these metro, uh, folks unless we get rural groundwater protection. And so that's what we're saying loud and clear to as any, many people that'll hear us, that the governor needs to hold the line to protect rural Arizona and not give ag to urban legislation passage, uh, uh, without taking care of all of us. So that's, that's what we're working on and saying to anybody who will listen. Another big issue is Prop one, two, three, and I know that's, um, doesn't affect you at the city, but it is the big, I just want you to know it's one of the big issues that we're dealing with. That's the extension of the, uh, uh, remember when Governor Ducey first started and he was put under a law, you know, he had to settle a lawsuit on funding? So what they decided to do was take, uh, a portion of the state land trust, which has never been done before. We've always had the corpus of the trust, you know, in place. But people voted to barely get it through and it passed. Well, now ten years later, we're hooked on the money and it's kinda like crack, here it is, now you stay on it. And, uh, so we're, we're, now we need to get something back. I mean, we need to get something back on the ballot, but the Republicans want to tie, um, putting in the state constitution vouchers and school choice so it cannot be repealed unless, if there was ever a Democratic governor and Democratic House and Senate. Um, many people feel that that's gonna cause the whole thing to go down. And then we're gonna have a, a three hundred plus, three hundred million plus hole in our budget, uh, for K-12 education. That would happen in January of, of twenty-seven. And so that's something significant to watch. Um, the votes are not there, the school districts are really, in public education's really pushing back. So, um, they took, they're taking this break and they don't plan to send it to vote on that because it'll go straight to the ballot. It won't even go to the governor, go to the ballot in November of twenty-six. So, um, that's a big issue. Also the stadium for, for the Diamondbacks, uh, that issue is unresolved still. Uh, the city of Phoenix and Maricopa County, uh, wanna make sure that they're treated fairly in comparison to the, the tenant in the stadium, the Diamondbacks. Uh, starter homes, another issue that we care about, uh, that would kind of ham, uh, hamstring the, the cities and towns with regard to not being able to require certain elements in homes. Um, and so the cities have been working hard to oppose that. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-one, the police defunding legislation that we've opposed, uh, city came in as opposed, uh, that, uh, passed out of the senate on party lines. Uh, so that means the governor will be vetoing it because of, uh, although they are, it'll be interesting, I, I would assume she will veto it because every city was opposed to it and all, every Democrat voted against it. But, um, you never know, it's an election year coming up. Um, also, uh, actually, oh, with regard to the budget, I didn't tell you that the, the finance advisory committee came back with the new numbers where we used to, beginning of the session, I was telling you that we had a over six hundred million, six hundred and twelve million, uh, uh, surplus above of projections. Well, now it's down to two hundred and seventy-seven million. So the money is going quick and, uh, and April numbers will be in soon and then we'll know where we're at there. But, uh, I just wanna put you on notice that special projects may not, uh, get passed. Um, you know, I know Mr. Gillette's working hard to get some transportation projects as we've discussed at previous meetings and he's fighting for those. Uh, whether there's gonna be money for those, it will remains to be seen. Um, and also, uh, the finance advisory committee and the joint legislative budget committee has also indicated that if we go into a recession, um, this is just their speculation, uh, but we can be facing a one point eight billion dollar shortfall in fiscal year twenty-seven. So that would not be good, uh, for any of us. Uh, so Mayor, members of council, that's, that's my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions from council for Mr. Dorn? Tom, you're off the hook.
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Manager Walsh.
Tom, could you just to, just to clarify on the, the police funding bill, um, what that did and, and just kind of explain? And, and I, I can assist as well as explaining our position on that and why, why we took a position of opposition on that?
Well, yeah, because, um, all of the cities pretty much got in this together with, you know, the word spread among all of us that we're, uh, um, I'll just read you the summary on it. So prohibit, prohibit cities and towns from reducing the annual operating budget of their municipal, uh, police departments below the previous year's budget. And if you do so, it would impact your state shared revenues the following year. So that's basically the gist of the bill.
So our, our reason for opposition was following our legislative policies was being able to have the local control over what we do with our budgets. So it wasn't a, a, I, I know the, the name for the bill has become the, the don't defund the police bill. And, and when you oppose that bill, that, that brings headlines, but I just wanted to explain that bill. Um, our legislative policies is to maintain that local control and this would take that local control from us, give us, giving us, taking away our flexibility to, to pivot and, and move as, as needed based on, on our, uh, financial situation. Um, basically the bill said, whatever you funded last year for police, you have to at least do that the next year. And, and it really takes away that, that flexibility that the city has. So that was our, our reasoning because it took away that local control, that was our reasoning for the opposing.
Well, Tim, and so the public understands too, because you, I think you and I discussed this, and I'm not sure who else, but for example, um, neighborhood enforcement, um, where we broke that department off from the police department and put its, and so that funding was transferred to a different department. But under this law, we wouldn't be able to have that freedom to be able to do that.
Perfect, yep, that's a great example.
So I, I thought that was a great example that you had brought up before.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you, once again, we appreciate all you do for us. Tom, thank you. Once again, we appreciate all you do for us.
Alright, thank you all very much. Have a great meeting.
You too. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. Turn some time over to Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing tonight.
Okay. Counselor Walker, Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight, I'll leave that to you.
Thank you, Counselor Ward.
Nothing.
Counselor Saly?
Uh, just one quick announcement. Um, we hosted the City of Needles here. Um, and we showed, they wanted to come and see our downtown project, our revitalization efforts, and they wanted to get more information about how we accomplished that, what the results have been. Um, and so, I kinda gave them a preview. Uh, Manager Walsh helped me with that, we gave them a tour and they're looking to do the same thing in Needles that we did here. So, I thought that was a, a win and a proud moment for our city because now other cities are looking to us and asking how we did that.
Well, thank you for taking, taking lead on that and representing our council. So, Vice Mayor.
I just had um, two announcements. I just wanna thank uh, the Chamber of Commerce for all their hard work uh, that they put into First Friday. First Friday is amazing and I'll be requesting those numbers um, when they're, are available as to attendance. And then also to the Fun Run Group who hosted the Fun Run, Route sixty-six Fun Run. Um, it was well attended as, um, also, and I'm, it was a full weekend down here. So, um, I wanted to give kudos to both of those organizations for those events.
Great, thank you for recognizing them. I have nothing really much more to add, but I do wanna remind everybody, this Sunday is Mother's Day. And uh, let's remember the special women in our live, lives and uh, all they do for us. And so, on that, uh, item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counselor Ward?
On this uh, ordinance nineteen seventy-two, I would like to see a list of properties or plats that are out there that were started. It doesn't make any sense to pass an ordinance and not enforce it. We need to know how many of those are out there, where they're at, and uh, so we can, we can figure this thing out. Because it, it doesn't make any sense to pass an ordinance and then every council meeting you have one that you're not enforcing the ordinance.
And that goes for all kinds of ordinances that we pass. It's silly to have a law if we don't enforce it. Okay?
If I may just ask a clarifying, I'm, for an engineer, I'm bad with numbers. Can you, uh, the nineteen seventy-two, which ordinance was that?
That's the one on not accepting the drainage.
Perfect, okay, thank you. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure. We actually are bringing that back, I think on the twentieth? Jason's not, twentieth? So, we will actually have an item on the twentieth to clarify a, a drop dead date on that. So we, we are bringing that back to, to do just what you're asking.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Anybody else? Yes, Counselor Saly?
Um, I wanted to ask, when we uh, expect to hear something about the four-H request for backyard swine?
Uh, already working on updating the backyard foul.
Foul? Sorry. Not swine, foul.
Foul might be a tough sell. Swine might be a tough sell.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I don't know. So, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Um, number, item number nine, executive session, nine A, city manager annual review. The city council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A one to discuss the city manager's annual review, discussion, possible action. Can we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're going to, we're gonna take about a five-minute break so we can take care of business. Okay, well, we are back from executive session and um, we have reviewed and talked with our city manager and we all are in agreement that we're happy with his performance as last year. And um, we'll move on from there. And once again, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.